Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City of Urbana Council's Committee of the Whole for June 13th. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Still here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? I do have one change under 5A, the presentation by Adams Outdoor Advertising, that's been moved to July 11th. Okay. Oh, I skipped over. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Bill?
I had a question. Were you there? You're listed as present.
Um, no.
It's me.
Twenty-third.
So, yeah, so Diane wasn't there?
Well, I'm listed as absent.
Oh, you're listed as present and absent.
I'm everywhere. Okay.
That's tricky.
So we'll just cross out my name under those present and leave the one as absent.
Twenty-third of May.
Any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, those passed.
That was yours.
Public input. Two at the time of the presentations. Reverend Dr. Evelyn and Bishop King James Underwood would not like to address the committee, but ask that their concerns be entered into the record. They're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Okay, we have two presentations on the TIF district topic. I do have one more communication from the public for Eldress Melinda Carr, and she wishes to express her continued concerns about sewer issues in the Dr. Ellis subdivision and their So we have Libby Tyler and Brandon Boyes.
So we're going to tag team. We've got two related presentations back-to-back here. Culmination of a lot of work over several months, actually, so it's exciting to be here to present this information to the council and talk about where we're at with our TIF districts. And thinking back several months now, some council members will recall that you had asked for a retrospective look at our existing TIF districts, particularly in light of our work in looking at the creation of a new TIF district in the downtown. And Libby Horwitz is here tonight as well. We tasked Libby, our Economic Development Specialist, with digging through old files. We focused particularly on TIF 1 and 2. Those are our first two TIFs, and they affect the downtown most profoundly. And Libby dug through old reports, old files. These TIFs, 1 and 2, date back to the 1980s, and of course, there's been a lot of staff turnover and not such good record-keeping, we found, particularly prior to about 1990, a little better in the 90s, and then after 2000, we had excellent record-keeping. So it was a little bit, a little bit spotty, but it was a really excellent exercise to go through these. She's prepared a really beautiful report, pictorial, very specific, a lot of data, a lot of detail, and we're not going to spend a lot of time, you know, page by page here, but please take a look at your leisure, and it's really exciting to see all the different things that we've done over the years. And again, a disclaimer that we aren't able to provide as much detailed information on the earlier projects just because of the length of time. So this was a daunting task. It's pretty, in some ways, overwhelming, pretty awesome too, because the importance of what we've been doing and the importance of the redevelopment areas in our downtown and the use of TIF, kind of pioneering work of use of TIF that the City of Urbana's been engaged in, but it's been a very useful exercise. It's helped us to focus on the, you know, the best ways to move forward in the upcoming TIF, which will be the subject of our next presentation. And in the process of this, we had some questions. Well, you know, you know, this is great to get all this information packaged on TIF 1 and 2. What about 3 and 4? And of course, we closed out 3 a few years back, and we had some nice summary information presented at that time. But just, just because of these questions, we've also provided a quick little cheat sheet here on major projects, major accomplishments of TIF 3 and TIF 4, which of course is still going on. And you can, it's just a reminder of some of the major projects that we've undertaken in these two TIF districts, and some graphs on showing the growth in the property values and some reference information. So this is simply for your, for your use. Brandon has a presentation here, Brandon Boyes, our Economic Development Manager, where he's going to run you through our retrospective report, but I just wanted to highlight some of the things that jumped out at me in this overall evaluation. And just looking at this, these are the things that I've been hit with. And again, most of the data was in the more recent years of the TIF, but we counted up, it's probably close to 100, but 86 major new projects, and that includes new builds, but a lot of complete renovations of buildings in our downtown. That's a lot. 100 renovations, smaller renovations, and again, just where we had the data available. Over 75 new businesses into the downtown. Just in the last 10 or so years, over 500 new jobs, very incomplete number, but we're able to count some of those from more recent years, and 92 alone in 2015. So it's been a great job creator. These are from TIF, from projects that TIF was assisting with. A very, very impressive list of public amenities from our TIFs, parking deck, streetscape, the lighting, the road improvements, the Boneyard Creek, the mini-parks. And I do have just some concluding statements, just to let you know a little more about how I view the overall impact of the TIF in the downtown. And then in terms of value added to the real estate, over $16 million of value added to the real estate, where those values had been declining. So you cannot establish TIF where those values haven't been declining, so we've seen an increase, and this is very impressive when you think that in our downtown, it's actually built up. It's very hard to add value where buildings exist. And we're not, you know, unless something is unsafe or an obsolete type of building, we really haven't been in the business of tearing down and rebuilding. It's more about expanding the uses and upgrading and restoring these uses. We've been able to add that much assessed valuation. And then we take a look at the goals that were in the plans, because after all, redevelopment in TIF is a plan. It's not just a day-to-day activity. It's a plan where you set goals, you have projects, it's in the document called the plan. And part of what Libby did is she evaluated what had happened in the TIFs against those plans that were adopted, and then in the case of 1 and 2 amended, we actually completed all the projects that we set out to in TIF 1. So we had 100% completion of a plan. That's, that's pretty great. We do a lot of plans where we get some of the way through implementation, but there, we were able to complete the job. And in 2, 2 was still in force. We've done an awful lot of those as well. Part of our presentation will be focusing on what remains to be done, and of course, that will segue into our next presentation. So I'll ask Brandon at this point to run through his summary of the report, and Libby's here if you have any specific questions on the report.
Thanks, Libby. So I will try to go through a quick and relatively simple summary of this document, and again, thank you to Libby Horwitz for all her work in putting this together. We found a lot of files from the 80s in storage, and it was fun going through them. Just a quick summary of the four TIF districts and just the key dates. TIF Districts 1 and 2 being established in 81 and 87 respectively, and then they were extended in 2004, 2005. TIF 3 having been retired in 2013, and then TIF 4 continuing through 2025. In summary, the downtown TIF districts have enabled and supported major private commercial investments, major public infrastructure investments, and then achieved major things for the community plans and the goals of the TIFs themselves. TIF 1 had an overall EAV growth of about 4.8 million. The district stabilized, and you saw growth in the early years, especially resulting multiple private projects that happened at that time, but it struggled to keep pace with inflation. TIF 2 had an overall EAV growth of 11.4 million, and again, the district, it was stabilized, the values did increase, and TIF 2 did successfully maintain value over inflation. Both of the areas are largely built and have many problematic sites. TIF 1 and 2 combined, again, these are, I'm missing a zero there, but over 120,000 square feet of new construction have been added since 1999. That's, I believe, from our permit data. So that doesn't include spaces that were actively renovated, you know, so I think there's about 12,000 square feet up on the second story of, like Cafeteria and Company, for example. That was under your life space. We weren't able to capture spaces like that that had been renovated, but just had been dormant. As Libby mentioned, over 90 jobs in 2015 and over 500 since 2003. For the TIF goals and plans, Libby already mentioned that all the goals for the TIF 1 plan for the private projects was completed. And TIF 2, it still has some outlined major goals, but the process hasn't concluded fully. The TIF district also made major advances in our community goals, the comp plan, the downtown plan. And when I say the comp plan, recognize there were changes to the comp plan over this extended period of time. There were multiple downtown plans during that time. There was more than one Boneyard Creek master plan during that time, and of course, council goals have changed every year. And I think that's one of the most redeeming aspects of how a TIF district functions, is that it is subject to the control of the local municipality. The council has oversight over how that TIF district is implemented. It doesn't occur blindly pursuing certain, you know, narrow economic benchmarks. It's a tool that can be advanced to achieve community goals as it works to achieve economic goals. And I think that our downtown TIF is a great example of that. This map, which is in the document, shows all the locations in TIF 1 and 2 that were subject to major agreements, redevelopment agreements primarily. And as you can see, it's a pretty significant area. It includes pretty much all the major new projects. And of course, this map doesn't include the infrastructure areas of improvement, but I'll discuss those later. Those major projects that really define how we see downtown, how the public and visitors to our downtown see downtown, include, of course, Five Points, both sides of the north end of the intersection, both Gateway Shops and the Five Points Commerce Center. That's allowed us to attract major national brands like Walgreens and Wendy's and Jimmy John's, but also have a solid credit union branch there as well, that in some ways is the credit unions flagship branch. The Urbana Crossing development, Schnucks and Starbucks, an additional outlet there. The Stratford Apartments and the Halberstadt House were the two major additions of residential. Stratford being the most recent new construction we've seen in the downtown, was, TIF was integral in supporting that, and in fact, we're still supporting that development prior to the completion of the agreement. Jumers Hotel and Conference Center expansion. TIF was integral to that expansion happening at the north end of the complex there, and the construction of the parking deck was actually part and parcel to that expansion effort for the Jumers at the time. And the, actually, ITIA, the Illinois TIF Conference, was held at, at the Jumers Conference Center after that was completed, because that was a shining example of what TIF could accomplish in Illinois at that time. Subsequently, the Landmark Hotel restoration was also funded by TIF. And of course, that was also subject to a return of some of those incentives. County Plaza was renovated. This was actually just through the redevelopment incentive, but Choices is a major employer in our downtown. County Plaza benefited from that investment. Lincoln Square with the renovation for the Health Alliance offices, that was a major investment by the TIF. Colab Cafeteria Company and Sip Yard, those were all separate agreements, but collectively, they represent a fairly major site. The Patel Law Office is a new construction on University Avenue. And Omnicare Labs, formerly Michelle's Bridle, just south here of the city building, was renovated with TIF funds. And some of the ones that are active, you can see under construction today. Stevens Building renovation and the inclusion of those four upper-story apartments, 129 North Ray Street being reactivated for retail, and Aziz Broadway Market being reactivated for retail. So also in the, in the list of sites, there were some major demolitions that have occurred, really have reduced, eliminated some problematic buildings and created opportunities for new development. The Helmut Lumber Site, we've been referring to this site. It was owned by Allen Strong. It's immediately south of Lille Park. It's currently a parking lot primarily used for Silver Creek, but that was the old Helmut Lumber Site, and that removal of that was a major goal of that agreement, and that was accomplished. And that's really going to set the stage for future redevelopment near and complementing Lille Park. Jolly Roger, of course, we're marketing that area as the North Crane Alley site, but TIF did assist with the demolition of, of that building, and unfortunately, it was beyond rehabilitation. And then the Thornburn School was, stood where the Phillips Recreation Center now stands, and the demolition of that was assisted by TIF in order to allow for that public facility. City acquisitions, and most of these are also demolitions. The Denny's Dry Cleaning Site, I guess I'm happy I came on board with the city after this was largely taken care of. This, I know, was a lot of staff effort for many years to address the environmental contamination of this site. Unfortunately, it's being actively reused by the Courier Cafe at this time. 200 South Vine Block, block north of City Hall. We're currently working with TWG, but the acquisition and demolition of homes on that site was funded by TIF. And then the parking lot at Broadway in Illinois, also known as Lot 24 West, it's in an intermediate use as a parking facility, but it was added to Lincoln Square's parking in such a way that it can be taken out if we choose to market it for redevelopment, which we're hoping to do in the not-too-distant future. So of the incentive programs, I mentioned redevelopment agreements. There were 13 agreements in TIF 1 and 2. Those are all, always get approved by city council, so city council has a direct hand in how those major improvements are approved. Redevelopment incentives are administrative, and they tend to be for significant renovation or restoration incentives. This used to be the facade loan program. Now we just call it redevelopment incentive program, because we utilize it for more than just for facades. But about 80 businesses have benefited from that project, and there's a list in the back. There's not really a good way to summarize all the improvements that have been made, but these projects generally go to renovating space, so it's more compatible for a tenant or for aesthetic improvements to the exterior. And then business grants, these are the small grants we issue when the tenant occupies to encourage activation, and we've provided about 75 of those in TIF 1 and 2. And those were, I think, only a program that was added in later years. The infrastructure downtown, I mentioned, of course, the downtown parking deck and the Boneyard Creek Improvement Area, which is funded by bonds paid for by TIF 2 and will be paid for by TIF 2 through the end of, of that TIF district. Iron Post has a small mini-park adjacent to it, and there's also a mini-park across the street from Black Dog. Those were both created with TIF funding and maintained in part. The county courthouse renovation was greatly insisted by the TIF district, and the TIF also helped with some of the site preparation for the expanded courthouse. Of course, Main Street, Broadway Avenue, Ray Street, Water Street, and Vine Street, some of the most important thoroughfares of our downtown, as we know them today, or it's really the result of that TIF funding to widen the sidewalks, add brick banding, and to add street furniture, banners, aesthetic lighting, and of course, also resurfacing the streets, rebuilding the curbs, adding ADA accessibility, improving the lights, and then of course, adding bike lanes as well on Main Broadway and Race. So the multimodal atmosphere of our downtown has really been enhanced by TIF, which crosses over into other goal areas like the bike plan. And then public arts sculptures and curbanas, you know, we've taken those extra steps in to make downtown a lively place, make it a place that people want to come and interact with, make it a place that businesses want to be located in. And we've had a lot of success. I think we are working on our second permanent acquisition for the art sculpture program, in addition to Spirit Tree and Murals on Glass, is a recent addition that's, that's been a good success in our downtown. Marketing and activation, just some of the programming that TIF has also supported. Market at the Square and its grounds have been enhanced by the TIF, and more recently, the food truck rallies that are seeking to activate a different part of downtown and also bring more use into the Civic Center. The Public Arts Program does many events at the market. We're doing an art expo now, and also annual celebrations at the Boneyard Improvement Area, so trying to, again, bring activity and market the downtown areas. Major events, as you know, our TIF has been vital to them. The Urbana Business Association has acted in many ways as our downtown business association, reaching out to businesses and serving as an ambassador and having a presence in our downtown, in addition to managing the banner programs, putting on major downtown events, and then just doing general marketing of our downtown. Staff, of course, engage in business outreach and site visits. We administer these programs, and we've also created many downtown preshers and promotions as well. So transitioning to what, what wasn't completed, the, this is a list of the sites that we continue to be optimistic that we can achieve some great things at. First and foremost is the block north of City Hall, 200 South Vine, the Urbana Landmark Hotel, achieving full activation is a major goal. The North Crane Alley Site, that was never written into any plan per se, but its location is so central to our downtown, we really have an opportunity to create greater density, ideally bringing more residential into the downtown, rather than just having more surface parking in the, in the heart of our downtown. Lincoln Square, as you all know, will likely experience a major vacancy when the Carl Health Alliance offices relocate, when they complete their new facility by the 5774 interchange, and subsequently, TIF may very well be needed in order to fully activate that space. Blockbuster Site is the southwest corner of Five Points. That's really the quadrant of that intersection that has seen the least amount of investment. It's the most problematic. It has the Boneyard Creek right there. It has an interesting compilation of industrial uses, and, and really, that, that site extends south even of, of what's just marked there, because in some ways, we'll, we'll probably need to look at reuse of the Gill Building as well. Racing Green Site, which is adjacent to the library campus, the TIF could factor into achieving the library campus's goals. Cedar and Green Site, that's another site for potential, most likely residential infill or perhaps neighborhood-appropriate commercial. The School District Administration Building Site, which is also adjacent to the next phase of the Boneyard and the county jail site, which seems that the county may be getting closer to making a decision of that. So that's my quick summary, and I know Libby had some concluding remarks.
Yeah, it is a pretty overwhelming list of things, and weather's been great. It's a great time to walk around, bike around, and kind of view what's happening in our downtown. A lot of, a lot of great things have been happening in the downtown, but working on these reports has given me a new appreciation of what I experience and what I see in the downtown and what the history is. So I almost want to invite you on like a mental walk with me, just, just for a minute, and I tried to describe this in the memo as well, but, you know, we could step right outside here. It's a nice night, although we're stuck here in this meeting, but, you know, step outside. There's some beautiful paving in the park that's next to the city building that, that TIF assisted with. There's our exciting redevelopment site that we've acquired just north of this building. We can, you know, walk across the street to Lincoln Square and see the really handy, well-used seating areas and improvements to the parking lot that TIF has participated in. We can see the Omnicare Business Building that's been expanded and allowed for another business to relocate to the place of their dreams, and another TIF district at Michelle's provides employment here in the downtown. We can walk along the brick-banded sidewalks, appreciate the ornamental lighting that really marks our downtown, look at the banners on the poles, you know, view the improvements to Lincoln Square Mall, one of the first enclosed malls in the country. You know, there's so many malls that are dead, and this one isn't. It was reinvented as Lincoln Square Village. In fact, there's a whole website on dead malls. So we kept our mall alive. It's been reinvented. It can continue to do better, but it had low occupancy. It swung back up. It reinvented itself with a wonderful Common Ground Food Co-op, you know, instead of the classic department store, and it's, it's really working. It's got great office space as well. We can then walk up to Race Street, turn the corner. We can view, again, the streetscape on Race Street, and coming up to Main Street, we can see that those beautiful historic buildings on Main Street are now completely occupied and renovated, and there's businesses in them. I was talking with our library director last week, and she mentioned how people who have worked at the library for a number of years always had just like two places they could eat lunch. Well, now, they can do all kinds of things in the downtown. They have all kinds of choices in the downtown, things they can do, places they can have lunch, different types of places. It's an active downtown. And those businesses and the, the template that created a nice place for businesses to locate was assisted and created by TIF. The roadway improvements on Race Street, the roadway improvements on Main Street, which incorporated bike lanes, curb, bunkouts, curbanas, the plantings, the decorative lighting, that creates a place that people want to be. You can go further up Race Street and go to our beautiful Boneyard Creek Park, and the great opportunities that that's presenting. Activating the buildings, sort of these not very nice old industrial buildings that are now getting enlivened, and we're going to see a brewery in one building. We have a grocery store already existing, a market coming, outdoor seating. It's just a beautiful location, a safe bridge for people to, to cross over, pedestrian bridges as well. Keep walking up Race Street if you would, and I remember the Helmut Site and the 20-some abandoned vehicles that were stuck back there and the fire hazard that it was. And now it provides, you know, parking, and it's a future redevelopment site. It's just Silver Creek, very successful. It's just Silver Creek, a very successful restaurant. I skipped over the Courier Garden and parking that replaced a very dangerous contaminated building. We would not have been able to deal with that without the assistance of TIF. Let's go up to University Avenue. We'll see a law building there that has been assisted. A new building, a former gas station vacant, not much going on there. Now a nice building. Let's keep going now. Maybe you gotta be on your bike now because it's kind of a long walk or maybe in your car. And we've got gateway shops and we remember what used to be there. There used to be a hotel on part of that site where not very nice things happened. Including a very, just very bad things had happened there. And a not very vibrant car dealership that really needed a better location. And we were able to get that relocated again with TIF IV up to an auto mall, which is a real boon for the city. So that's one corner of Five Points. The other corner of Five Points were Walgreens and the Five Points Commerce Center is, was also not a good place. There's not a place you would want to hang out at that hotel that was there and the restaurants. It was a very blighted area, both corners. Now we have all these shopping choices, beautiful bank buildings, modern uses. And then let's continue down and I know we're just going to turn south again on Vine Street to complete our circuit. And we will see the Schnucks, the Urbana Crossing with Schnucks and Starbucks and the inline shops. That was before my time, but I have heard tales about what existed there and you know, the blight that existed in that location. And I didn't mention, you know, our parking deck and some of the other things that Brandon mentioned. The participation with the county on their beautiful expansion of the courthouse. Keeping our courthouse here could not have been done without the participation and working with our taxing partners on TIF. So it just occurred to me that everything good here in the downtown, all this good stuff that we appreciate and we enjoy is thanks to the use of this program. And it's hard to imagine what would be here, but I don't think it would be as vibrant. The other thing I want to mention is that redevelopment is not a building here and a building there. It's not one private developer builds a building, we're done. It's the whole fabric. It's not just the buildings. It's renovating buildings. It's helping the businesses. It's creating jobs. It's creating the setting, the beautiful setting that we have, doing the programming that makes people want to come here. It's the things like, you know, the beauties in the details of the public art, a sculpture. You know, a great business association to help businesses. Programs where we can give a location assistance to people and help them get started and those small grants that we provide. It's a big package deal and there's a big part to play for the public sector. It's not just a private sector undertaking and it's not just a city undertaking. It's all of these districts working together and the districts have been fantastic partners in the TIFs that we have now and they are fantastic partners in the TIF that we are working on now. So I just wanted to share that little vision. I know it's a little hard to paint a picture in words sometimes, but I wanted to share that revelation with you. I found it very powerful. So appreciate your patience. Do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Well, I have a comment and that is Indiana. They have a lot of little developments where they have the look of Urbana. We have the actual original buildings and we had the mayor of Carmel, Indiana, come and talk about roundabouts. But he was really enchanted by the benches that we have and wanted to know where we got the benches. So that's a very elegant community, so it's nice to get a compliment from Carmel, Indiana.
Dennis?
Thanks so much for all that hard work, Libby and Brandon and the whole staff, Elizabeth. I really appreciate this document, the Downtown TIF District's retrospective. I know that, you know, members of the community have asked about it. We are curious about it. And this is a really important historic document. Because it also gives us a perspective, not only of our progress and how we've changed over a course of, I don't know, thirty years. But you know, it also gives us sort of a benchmark so that when people are doing this again twenty years from now, they'll have something to refer to that's a lot more substantial than you were able to find out by going into the records. You know, from the eighties, you know, where, you know, things just started. So what a great, you know, this is just such a great document. It's well put together. Thanks so much, Elizabeth. And the photographs are all great. You probably noticed there was one photograph that wants to be replaced. I won't mention anything else. Could you tell me a little bit about, to understand? Figure seven, which shows the percent of properties receiving incentives for TIF I and II. And I see that in TIF I, there was a lot of benefits to properties. Seventy-two percent of food, seventy-nine percent of total. And in TIF II, it looked like the private, the private non-incentivized growth was strong. So what was the difference or do you see that, would you feel that TIF II has reached its potential if indeed the incentivization for some of the growth wasn't as dynamic from the TIF itself?
What page are you referring to, Dennis?
I'm on page twenty-seven. There's a graph. It's called Figure Seven.
I think if Libby can come up here to the staff seat.
And I realize that TIF II is still going, you know, we're not done with that yet.
Explain a little bit of what went into this graph, so.
Sorry about that. A lot of that reason was TIF I had a lot of those smaller buildings. The way that that graph was done was I went parcel by parcel and that's based on current use and separated those out. So TIF I, you really saw a lot of, more renovation projects. If you, the downtown, it's a lot more difficult buildings, more difficult spaces for buildings, for different businesses to operate in. TIF II saw more of the larger, like large construction projects. So that's also going to be a little skewed because of how I did that data. It's by parcel. So some of those large projects, like the Five Points, counts as one parcel. So percentage wise, when you're looking at that, that's going to skew that a bit.
Oh, I see. That explains a lot, yes. Okay. But there was also a very strong private investment as well.
Mm-hmm. And I mean, with that, you're not really looking at which businesses there are. That's every type of restaurant. There's also a lot more fast food restaurants in TIF II, which have been able to happen more, I think, than some of those smaller or different types of local restaurants that you're seeing.
And the other thing I just want to comment on is that probably, probably one of the most important things that happened during the TIF work was the repositioning of O'Brien Auto Park to the north. Because that freed up such a huge and important commercial strip in the downtown that was being used as a parking lot. You know, yes, for car sales, but basically it was a one-stop, one-product location. And now we have multiple stores in that location. So that was like a huge improvement in the near downtown area, so. So, very interesting document, really good work.
Any other questions? Bill?
I guess on that same page, the big red bars in the bottom graph don't necessarily mean that that was private development. That just means that like say for residential, ninety-nine percent red, one percent blue. That means one percent of the parcels actually received TIF funds. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so the ninety-nine percent didn't necessarily do any redevelopment.
Correct. I mean, a lot of those are the, yes.
So the same thing with the hotel. There's only, I mean, the big hotel downtown is in TIF I. The others were smaller ones that just didn't have any redevelopment done.
And some of them, it doesn't actually give total numbers and I apologize for that. So that's going to skew it as well. Some of them you have one hotel.
Yeah, it's still, it's still an interesting useful graph because you can see which uses took advantages of the incentive, basically. I guess a couple of questions. As far as just kind of overview how the TIF money was spent, we don't really see any kind of... What I was hoping for was maybe a pie chart that would show how much went to public investment and infrastructure versus how much went to private businesses redevelopment. And maybe even divide up the private businesses into a couple of different things by our incentive program versus tax rebates or something. And actually, tax rebates, I don't think showed up at all in this, did they? Did the, I think they call them interest rate subsidies. Is that the same thing as the tax rebates?
Well, it can be complicated based on how you're describing it. Typically, all TIF expenditures really come back to the fact that there are reimbursement for ineligible expense. So sometimes we program, we create agreements and programs that add other layers in. So from the perspective of the developer, it just works as a property tax rebate. Or it may be structured such, so with the facade loan program, when it started, you had to have a loan in place and you had to show the appropriate amount of eligible costs. But then the reimbursement was still tied to the amount of interest you were paying on your loan. So that's something that staff does. That's why we go to conferences to understand how communities make these reimbursements available in ways that are understandable and accessible to the business community and to the developers.
Okay, for example, I don't see any, maybe I missed, I didn't see anything about Stratford Residences. I think they were getting seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year in tax rebates.
Yeah, that's a development agreement or that's how that was enabled.
Okay, so there's nothing about how much we reimbursed for development agreements in this report?
Not on a summary level. It's a, that would be a very challenging thing to summarize because of the nature of the city budget going back that far, unfortunately.
Okay, I think that was the main thing I thought was missing was just kind of a overview of what, you know, how it gets divided up as far as... I mean, in the TIF reports, the ones especially that Durrell's been referring to, you see this big number coming in every year and a lot going out. But for the redevelopment agreements, especially the tax rebates, a lot of that disappears before we even get a chance. I mean, we never get to use it on anything. It's already been agreements that were made ten years ago. So I just kind of wonder what proportion of the TIF money is like that, that, you know, it shows up in the TIF reports. It looks like a big number, but it never really gets to the TIF budget in a way that we can use it.
Yeah, I think we could do that kind of an analysis for some of the more recent years of the TIF rather than a holistic retrospective, but that would give you a sense of the proportions, you know. Yeah, that, I can sort of estimate in my mind what that is, but I think it'd be better to try to create those categories and produce a report for some of the recent years. The TIF reports are statutorily defined and, you know, the State Comptroller's Office creates the categories that we're required to report within. And they aren't necessarily the most intuitive categories. But we work with the auditors to make sure that we're in compliance when we report using that document. But we might be able to make something a little more digestible.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure I'll be looking at this for a while. It's a pretty thick report.
Dennis?
Yeah, and just one more thought that I noticed. That sometimes, you know, we give incentives to different businesses in the hopes that that will encourage stability and future growth. And, you know, it can be hit and miss because each business is, you know, a private enterprise and you have different successes based on not only what the business is based on, but, you know, the success of marketing and other things. So I look at the history of our TIF districts and I look at the investment in nineteen ninety-five of five thousand and one dollar to Heel and Toe. And I think Heel and Toe is still with us. It's a major downtown store. It's had multiple expansions. You know, what good use of TIF money, what a success that is. And I look at, you know, the Iron Post, similar investment, you know, and we also added to it a wonderful outdoor space. But, you know, we also did a remodeling of the wall to allow windows, you know, on the south side that made the interior so much more beautiful. And then, you know, then once in a while you come upon one that just didn't work. So it's not, it's not a guaranteed science, but without some of these rather small investments, we've been able to support businesses that have been here for, you know, a decade or more and several decades. And I think there just has to be, you know, who's going to ever say that the investment in common ground to become part of Lincoln Square was a waste of money? I mean, it's just really so, such an important thing. So, good for, good for the city. You know, it's, I'm sure that we could, we could hope for yet greater things to achieve. But as you say, every step does build the whole. It's like a mosaic. And, you know, you can, you can put a lot of attention on the center, but also, you know, the edges are just as important. And I think the TIF district allows the edges to develop just as well as the downtown.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to move on to the Central Redevelopment Project Area TIF presentation. I have one member of the audience who wanted to make comments, but I'm going to ask you to hold them until after staff is finished just for logistical flow. So, there we go.
So we have a second presentation on this. This is a report looking ahead at this time rather than a retrospective on the redevelopment plan that we issued in draft form just a few weeks back. We'll be having a joint review board meeting coming up this week. We've been making this similar presentation to some of the other interested boards. Presented this information to the MTD Board and at least provided it to the school district and see if they would want us to be on an agenda. And tomorrow night we'll be going to the park district. So just providing a summary of our activities in the Central Redevelopment Project Area. Give you a little walk through the report and a sense of some of the dates that are coming up and some of the implementation steps. And just building off of our last presentation, I would say that this proposed TIF is one that we put together over a period of months, working with the input from the other taxing districts on projects and goals that they would like to see and focusing on things remaining to be done. But then, an exciting thing for all of us will be, that will be detiffing some other areas and moving on to the next generation. Included in the memo is a response to some of the comments that we've been receiving from Mr. Cruz. And, you know, just a response to some of the suggestions that he's made. And I won't be going through those too much tonight. I think it's more about just looking at the particular proposal that we have. So Brandon has some slides that he'll go over that with you.
Thank you. So just briefly, what is a TIF district? In broad terms, a TIF is an important means by which municipalities can achieve levels of community and economic development that exceed what we expect the market would do on its own. Throughout the state of Illinois, TIF remains the most important tool that's also very commonly available for local economic development initiatives. Rantoul recently approved a new TIF district. Champaign is planning a new downtown TIF district for another redevelopment site. They will use TIF for the proposed ninety million dollar project that they're planning for their downtown. They've used TIF for many of the projects that you've seen there. They used TIF for the Second Street Reach and the adjacent redevelopments as well. You, it's hard to walk into a mid-sized community in Illinois and see some impressive new public or private project and not, and have that project not be associated with a TIF district. Sometimes a business district or an enterprise zone, but usually a TIF district. Tax increment, you know, in general, it's that difference between the property tax revenue that was generated before and after the establishment of the TIF. Again, those are our TIFs. I used that same slide in the previous presentation. How our TIFs work. Development and redevelopment agreements, which are individually approved by council. I of course touched on that in the last presentation. Redevelopment incentives and business grants, those are approved administratively. Site assembly, marketing and district activation. I think I gave a good sense of that level of activity. But to be clear, the first two don't work very well if you're not also doing the direct engagement and have staff engaging... the direct engagement and have staff engaging to make those projects happen. And lastly, the public infrastructure improvements. So government agencies that are affected by TIF also participate in the joint review board, as Libby mentioned, we have good relationships and have had good relationships for many years with all of our taxing partners, and we've actively worked with them in different capacities in the different TIFs we've had. And there's proposals to work proactively with them in the current TIF. This current TIF, it's predicated on the need for, kind of where we left off at the last presentation, of those ongoing needs that are consistent with our comp plan, our downtown plan and our council goals. TIFs one and two, TIF one is at the end of its useful life, clearly, but TIF two, even though it will extend out to twenty twenty-two, that, you have to consider that a project built today would be assessed in seventeen and would first appear on the tax rolls in eighteen, so when you think about how much property tax rebates could actually occur for a new project, you're looking at about four years probably before the TIF terminates, and that generally is not sufficient. So that, yeah, the central, the, you know, we're really not that early in thinking about the future for these areas that are currently included in TIF two. The proposed central TIF is intended to be focused on the core and to exclude areas of TIF two that have already been redeveloped. And then, when you look at the map, which I think is the next slide, you'll, the thing that sticks out, the exception to the inclusion of the core is Crystal Lake Park, the Washington School and a little bit of additional park property all north of University Avenue, and those were included at the request of the park district and the school district because the school district's trying to redevelop. The Washington School and the park district's very interested in making future improvements to Crystal Lake to make it, you know, as vibrant and sought after as, you know, Meadow Brook is on a Sunday afternoon when it's nice out. So there is the map. Again, the new boundary is focusing on areas that have had stagnant EAV growth, as Libby mentioned, that's an important part in qualifying the TIF, older building stock, underutilized properties and challenging infill sites, and there's plenty of those. And this also includes many historic properties, including, you know, one in the National Register, one that's been, at least one that's been landmarked. So other things to work around because we want to respect and carry on the form that those buildings have been in. And as I mentioned, there's many public sites, and I think I'll talk a little more about that later. So when we look at the current and the proposed downtown TIF districts, we're going to get to the, get from where we're at to the arrangement of the new TIF by taking three steps. One is closing TIF one, which we're obligated to do. The second is conducting a boundary amendment of TIF two, and that's the de-Tiffing, the removal of parcels that are performing well from TIF two, and, I'm sorry, we're only removing the parcels that are not performing well to put them into the new TIF. The other parcels that are performing well are required to remain in the TIF for a few more years in order to pay for the ongoing roughly one million dollar a year payments for the Boneyard Creek Improvement Area bond, so we need that additional revenue moving forward. So these are the twenty fifteen EAV numbers, that would return about seven point eight million in EAV to the general tax base, so that's six point three million from TIF one, one and a half million from the TIF two parcels that would be reset, and that seven point eight million, if we took both those steps, would return to the tax rolls in tax year, revenue year twenty sixteen, payable twenty seventeen. So it's important to remember that a TIF district starts with no funds, there's no money available when you first establish a TIF district, it has to generate EAV, so it's really not at all surprising when you look back at those EAV patterns for TIFs one and two, you see these big spikes early on in the life of those TIFs, that's generally how you want to do it, you want to have a private project planned right away that the TIF is going to enable, and then that future increment can then be put towards other uses in accordance with the TIF plan and especially public infrastructure, which can't fund itself with a TIF. A TIF has to have private incremental dollars coming in to pay for public improvements. So those early private projects are really important, and as you know, the one that we're most expectant of happening soon would be the TWG project at the two hundred South Fine Block, that would be our initial project for the new TIF. And one that we don't expect would happen without not only the support of a TIF, but the support of a young TIF. So again, later in the life of the TIF, that's when we would expect to see major public infrastructure investments akin to the Boneyard, that happened much later in the life of TIF two. I guess a little, just brief overview of the two hundred South Fine Project, it was assembled with TIF two funds, as we mentioned, we went through an extended marketing process and selected a developer, we've gone and visited with them in Indianapolis, you know, they've been here many times, they're proposing a substantial thirty million dollar apartment, it would be market rate, not really student focused, have underground parking, and that density is a crucial aspect, I think, of not only bringing a large number of residential sites, but also achieving an urban form for our downtown, and then as well as a small amount of commercial. The density, the magnitude of the project, and particularly the underground parking, make it such that this development would be very unlikely to continue without property tax incentives through the TIF. However, this project is anticipated to be, the incentives for, are proposed to be funded from, ideally exclusively from the incremental taxes that are generated by the project itself. So when we can adhere to that formula, that really is the ideal formula for a property tax rebate scenario or a TIF incentive scenario, is that the project's being enabled by TIF, but the project's paying for itself in a sense through its own revenue in the future. But with the Urbana Landmark Hotel, that's the other project, there's a prospective buyer interested in full hotel renovation and reactivation to include the restaurant and conference center, and again, this, this project would look at deriving its incentives from increased property taxes, but also increased hotel motel taxes, and, you know, there's a quick reason why there's an and in that sentence and pointing to another revenue source as well. Existing buildings are often resistant to, or value increase as a result of a major investment. So in the later stages of TIF one and two, we've been fortunate to have revenue in the TIFs that we could apply to a lot of existing properties and get them reactivated, even though they're not responding with big increases in EAV. The former Washington School was mentioned before, this property's currently valued at zero, it's not contributing anything to the tax rolls as a privately owned site, just the change of ownership would of course trigger some increase in EAV, but because a developer often would see an existing facility like that as an obstacle to the outcome of the functional site, we want that infill, we want the repurposing of an existing building, and the TIF can help with that. Other major sites, North Crane Alley, Lil Park area, Five Points, the Blockbuster site, I believe I've talked about all of these already this evening. The southeast corner of Main and Vine Street, that is, there's the two auto places, that's the block north of the block north of City Hall, that has been largely assembled by a local property owner and clearly could be a site for more commercial uses. In addition, the parking lot north of Black Dog, that's sort of adjacent to the North Crane Alley site, different property owner, currently Carl is occupying that property there and making good use of that parking lot, however, depending on the change of use that would come in the next year or so, there may be a better case for redevelopment. The school administration building and the south parking lots of Lincoln Square, so those, referring to those south of Illinois. Lot twenty-four West, which I mentioned before, is the one the city assembled, that can be extracted from that parking agreement, but there's a potential to negotiate for additional redevelopment along that area. Public projects, most substantial would probably be the Boneyard Creek segments one and two, those continue west from the current Boneyard Creek Improvement Area, directly adjacent to the school district administration building and come down to Main Street. This could be a feature that ties together Main Street and the improved areas of the Boneyard and also runs adjacent to the west end of Main Street, primarily the two hundred block and that west side of Race, that area, we've just seen a lot of vibrant business activity and reinvestment in, the last of which is really the Stevens Building to happen. The CUNTT transit facility, there's, I think we're two years into the five-year agreement for a siting of, for the transit facility. This would replace the On Street Facility, we currently have, MTD has the ability to leverage significant federal funds, but we will need a source of local funds to enable this. Ideally, it would be a public-private partnership, so there could be a property tax generating component of it, but the city needs a tool by which it can reclaim and focus those tax revenues back into the project, and that's what the TIF could assist with. A rail trail facility, this has been a longer-term goal that's been discussed at times for the, it's the Norfolk Southern Line, I believe, that runs through downtown, just north of the Boneyard Creek, currently connects to the Carl campus, the President's campus, runs very close to the University of Illinois, runs through some neighborhoods and also pretty much connects you to downtown. This could be a very popular trail facility if that could be worked out. And again, we're looking at a, you know, roughly twenty-year timeframe, so it's important to recognize the viability of these kinds of projects over that longer timeframe. Crystal Lake and Lil Park were both requests of the park district, the county jail and the sheriff's office, dependent on what the county decides, but I know there's been renewed interest and discussion about that site. And then, of course, you need to advance our, continue advancing our downtown streetscape to be even more pedestrian bicycle friendly. As we look forward, the draft plan is online, Libby mentioned the joint review board meeting, which will be this week with our taxing partners. The public hearing will be on July eleventh, and we've done notices, there will be notices in the newspaper, we've done one round of mailings, there'll be a second. The ordinances are tentatively, would be introduced on July twenty-fifth unless the meeting date is changed, and the earliest adoption date would be August first. Just to summarize the intent of the TIF, the goal is to replace the expiring TIF one to focus on those areas of downtown that are most historic and, I guess, most costly to reinvest in. It would include the underutilized properties that are adjacent to that core of downtown in TIF two, and that's the de-Tiffing process or a boundary amendment. We would include many options for publicly owned properties, well, properties owned by our taxing partners, and public infrastructure that would balance and augment the investment that's happening in the private properties. We would be releasing properties that were successfully developed back under the tax rules, both through the de-Tiffing process, but then also at the termination of TIF one and TIF two, and that total is about seven point eight million that would go back to the taxing districts, again, in revenue year twenty sixteen, payable twenty seventeen. Oh, and of that amount, that's annually, I guess at the current tax rate, that's about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, so the city's portion of that is about a hundred and five thousand, is what the city's levy would, how it would respond if we just applied the same tax rate to this, this amount of EAV. Did you have any other comments? Okay, any questions? Yes?
I just noticed on the map, the parking lot, let's see, just south of the township building, kind of, it's along High Alley, it's owned by the library, it's not in the TIF district, is that a conscious choice, I mean, it's a parking lot?
I want to see if I can zoom in on what you're referring to here.
Corner of Race and Green, but it's the little lot that goes kind of east-west.
At the corner of Race and Green?
Yeah, see the High Alley?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the parking lot, right in that yellow corner there, just up to your right.
Oh, here?
No, to your right, and then down, right there.
Huh. I don't know, I don't recall a specific reason why that was excluded.
Yeah, we did include the library campus, so, but it looks like there might be one piece that they own, this might be one of those situations where a project has part in a TIF and part not in a TIF, we've come across that before, so, but we didn't intentionally exclude that, we were trying to focus on areas that we thought would redevelop, so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Dennis?
And, so Bill brought up a question about the border of the map, and, so at this point, the borders, because we have already discussed this with our partners, are these firm, there's not a way, we're not, you're not seeking to adjust the border to include one lot or not another at this point, or is there still flexibility based on public input?
There is not really flexibility at this point. It's technically possible, but it would be very costly because we would effectively have to restart the noticing process, we'd have to amend the plan, we'd have to change the date of the JRB, it would push the whole process back by months. That was why we went those extra steps to share the map with our taxing partners well in advance and then to bring the inducement resolution to the council with the, with the map at that time.
Probably easier in the future to reduce than to expand, so to add that little piece of the parking lot, you'd have to be, yeah, start again the noticing, we provided, like, noticed everybody within the district within a certain area, it's described in this fashion, we tried to surgically draw the TIF so it was the smallest area possible, and we could provide as much increment back to the taxing bodies, so we tried to be as surgical as we could. I think reducing in future years through an amendment would be easier, doing an amendment to expand is like starting a whole new TIF, it's just unfortunately the way it is.
Would you have to go to the state also to change the boundary if you were going to try to attempt that?
Yeah.
Well, you don't want to do that, I'm sure, so, okay.
Any other questions?
I did have one, well, actually I had two. First of all, my name is spelled wrong on the first page, and I figure if you can spell Jacobson correctly, they ought to be able to spell Marlin, so I'd appreciate getting that changed in the final document or the online document at the very least.
That change we can make.
Okay, and secondly, the more important question is looking to protecting the public investment once these TIF investments are made, and I noticed that the second objective for the redevelopment plan is to prevent the recurrence of blighting conditions, and when you look at the pictures, you know, the pictures- And when you look at the pictures, you know, the pictures that they included in this report, a lot of these are conditions that are basically maintenance that wasn't done or neglect of a building. So how, if we're now including these buildings in a TIF district, what is included in this plan to guarantee that once the improvements are made, the buildings will be maintained or the properties will be maintained in a way that protects the investment? So that we're not 20 years from now looking at blight again in these same projects. So what's in the plan for that?
Well, the plan doesn't include information on property maintenance codes or fire inspections, but, you know, certainly when you renovate and build new, you know, there's a chance to continue. I think we have to look in our toolbox for the inspection programs that we have now in place that I think are a lot more rigorous than they were back when TIF-1 and 2 started. So I think that's important, but that's, those types of activities are not normally seen or supported by a TIF. It's more, more in the area of code enforcement because we do have good codes.
Are terms like that something that could be written into redevelopment agreements? Expectations for maintenance or, I'm just curious?
Our agreements do require compliance with codes. All the redevelopment agreements, you'll see that's a stock requirement. And we can go above and beyond via the agreements as well.
Okay, on a case-by-case basis. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We have Gerald Cruz wish to make comments.
I guess that's working. I'm certainly not going to be able to respond to everything that was talked about in the report or in the retrospective of TIF-1 and 2 in five minutes, which is unfortunate. But I would like to make a couple of points this evening. There's a ton more that can be made and should be made because you're primarily hearing a city's perspective and the counterbalance or the balancing perspective is just not being presented adequately, in my opinion. So I would like to just cover this particular issue tonight. First of all, I want to say I do not fail to recognize the positive benefits of TIF-1 and 2 that have had on downtown as aptly described by Libby and Brandon tonight in their memo and presentation to you. That's obvious. There's no argument about that. I also do not fail to recognize or ignore the shortcomings of TIF-1 and 2 as documented by their historical performance. Instead of just repeating past practice, the city council can learn and do better in the creation of a new downtown TIF. With this TIF, the city will have a TIF presence in downtown for 58, and I would suggest it's going to be 70 years. Now, that's unusual. Champaign forming a new downtown TIF for 23 years and Urbana having one for 70 years is two totally different situations. If this TIF is created, Bill, you have a question, it's likely to be extended and there'll be a TIF presence for 70 years in downtown Urbana. That's very likely. That speaks volumes to the original and intended, limited intent and purpose of TIF and what TIFs have become today. Based on 2014 tax rates, a chart shows each taxing body's contributions to the new central downtown TIF for the next 23 or 35 years. You can look for yourself. Choose whichever column you want. The red, the yellow box simply refers to the budget in the plan where the city's going to access $45 million over the course of the TIF. So where does that money come from? You can see where it's coming from. It's coming from all the taxing bodies as they pay their property taxes through projects like TWG. The city staff claims it would be counterproductive to constrain a TIF district in advance of its adoption. I would claim some type of de-Tiffing amendment in the plan would actually make the downtown TIF more productive, more focused, and beneficial to the community as a whole. Why should taxing bodies have to wait 23 or 35 years to realize the financial benefits of downtown EAV growth? Is that even reasonable? Again, when they're contributing the property tax dollars? Has the city estimated how many years it will take each taxing body to recover its TIF property tax dollars? If you subtract the city's portion from the totals at the bottom, there's approximately $40 million in 23 years or $60 million in 35 years that the taxing bodies have to recover because of their participation in TIF. The city's using it. They don't have access to it. This would seem to be a critical point of information for the council and the public to know. How long is it going to take for them to do that? Knowing the historical financial impact of downtown TIFs upon taxing bodies both short-term and long-term, a serious discussion of de-Tiffing is clearly warranted. The incorporation of some type of de-Tiffing amendment of private development projects over a certain dollar amount would be a significant improvement to the plan. Why would this be? The city still retains TIF as a tool to incentivize private development. That does not change one bit. That is totally unaffected, which is a primary goal of the plan. The city still retains its access to-
You have one minute, Mr. Cruz.
$5.7 or $8.7 million regardless of Tiffing to use as it wishes for heart, signage, festivals, storefront improvements, et cetera. You still get that money. Taxing bodies will benefit from TIF within years rather than decades. All taxing bodies are treated fairly and more equitably. And finally, the community benefits not only from downtown improvements, but also in multiple other ways during these 23 or 35 years because taxing bodies now have a quicker access to their property taxes to support their programs and services to the community. Yes, the city would have fewer tax dollars for public projects in the later years of TIF. Yet ironically, the same amount of property tax dollars still would exist within the community, now only being held by each taxing body. Therefore, it doesn't preclude the city from being able to work with any willing taxing body on a jointly funded public project if they wish to do so. Can I finish the last three paragraphs?
Let me move for more time.
Okay. As I, as I have spoken to many of the taxing body boards, they have never heard of de-Tiffing. The concept has never been presented or discussed with them. Yes, with de-Tiffing, the plan would have to be modified, but you only have this moment and this opportunity to revise the plan to make this TIF model that would benefit the entire community, not just downtown. Would it hurt to have a serious discussion, I mean a real honest discussion, of de-Tiffing options with your TIF partners, if you consider them partners, okay, on Tuesday to receive their input and thoughts about de-Tiffing as a part of an amendment to this plan? Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cruz? Okay, next up on the agenda is a staff report. Nope, no, no staff report. Okay, ordinance number 2016-06-047 and 034R related to the legacy tree program.
This ordinance is an amendment to allow us to partner with the Urbana Park District to recognize park district trees under our legacy tree program. It's something we've been considering since the beginning stages of developing the legacy tree program. It came about as a suggestion in our tree commission meeting when two Leo Park trees were nominated for the legacy tree program. So we've made our amendments to the ordinance and, of course, we've, I've provided you an agreement and a resolution for activating the agreement with the park district.
Charlie?
I'm ready to go, but I think Kurt made some suggested corrections. I assume those are more what we want to be doing?
Yes, yes.
You've seen those? Yeah, okay. So I'll move, I'll move this to council with a recommendation for approval, given the corrections, including the corrections.
Okay. Moved by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Further discussion?
Just one.
Dennis?
So I think it's very thoughtful to work with the park district. I mean, they do, they do maintain a huge part of the urban forest that we have. They have remnants of the old grove as well. And getting them to participate and to honor the tree program, and as I see, they would be maintaining their marking of the tree independently. They'd be financing their share of the participation, just as we participate ourselves and pay for our own share. So there wouldn't be an additional burden potentially. Actually, we might even save some money by partnering with them. So it seems like a very reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, it should enhance the program. In fact, our urban forest is all public trees, park district and city, so I think it's a great deal.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that moves to council. Next up is resolution number 2016-06-034R, which is a resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Urbana and the park district.
So moved, Kurt moved to send to council.
With the suggested revisions.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, did you want to?
Oh, sure. Since I was here talking about legacy tree, I thought I'd just show you what we've gotten so far from the Sim Hackberry.
So a part of a legacy tree is making an appearance right now.
So we are in the process of milling lumber from the Sim Hackberry. This is just one piece. We will be getting approximately 800 board feet from the Sim Hackberry. We took two logs over there about a year ago. It was April of '14. And we have videos on our city website showing the process. We have various sites' boards, and we have some slab wood that has live edge, which is the natural edge to the log. But we're going to provide all of these pieces and make them available to the public. Hopefully, if we can raise some funds, we may make a conference table ourselves and have that in a public place commemorating the Sim Hackberry. But I wanted to bring this, it's a very different wood. The inside of the Hackberry tree, especially older trees, is a darker wood, and the outer part is a lighter wood. So it's very colorful.
How dense is it compared to some of the other?
It's a very heavy, dense wood. Hackberry, these pieces will not make good outdoor furniture, but it is good indoor furniture. In fact, the person who's milling the wood created part of their hardwood floor in their house with Hackberry.
For those of you who haven't picked it up, that is a heavy piece of two-by-eight or whatever it is.
So just FYI, I thought I'd show you our progress on the Sim Hackberry.
Thank you.
The other prop I bought is our demonstration plaque for our legacy tree program. So this is what I'm taking around, or will be taking around, to talks to raise money for these plaques. This is a desktop version, but this is about the height that the plaque will stick out of the ground. And these will be installed at various trees as donated money allows. We do have one for our first live legacy tree on Griggs Avenue, so we are going to be installing that this year.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have two items related to the market at the square. And Natalie Kenny Marquez, our Urbana's Market at the Square director, will be presenting those.
It's all right if I speak to both-
Yes, please.
-at the same time. Thanks. Today, I'm here in regards to two resolutions authorizing acceptance of grant funds for the farmer's market. Both grants support programming occurring at the market that provides farm link and nutrition education and expands access to healthy, locally grown food. The first grant comes from First Federal Savings Bank of Champaign-Urbana, and that supports our sprouts at the market programming. That is a program that's been around for nine years this season, and it provides opportunities for kids to taste fresh, in-season produce geared towards kids ages three to eight years of age. The program occurs once a month on the third Saturday of each month, and the themes change on a month-by-month basis. It's a lot of fun and the kids enjoy it, and the families take home some great ideas as well. The second grant comes from Farm Credit Illinois. Their funding incentivizes SNAP purchases at the farmer's market. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. That's a federal program administered by the United States Department of Agriculture. In Illinois, those benefits are loaded onto a card called LINK. Customers can then use those LINK cards at farmer's markets, and then they can use the benefits from those cards on eligible products. That includes meat, dairy, honey, produce, baked goods, and food-bearing plants. As an example, last Saturday, we had 84 vendors at the farmer's market. Over half of them were eligible to accept SNAP benefits.
Okay. Any questions for Natalie? Is there a motion? Bill?
Just a question. Are these the same sponsors from last year for the same programs? So we have new sponsors for both?
Yes, that's correct.
Last year, how much was spent on the SNAP program?
Last year, we received $4,000 in incentives to double SNAP. Overall, there's, including the double value, there was over $15,000 spent in SNAP at the farmer's market.
That was last year?
Yeah.
So did we have to, it seemed like we ran out last year and had to find another sponsor or something?
Correct. We didn't find another. So it took us about 11 weeks to go through that. This year, we're receiving double that amount, so that should put us through at least the end of October, hopefully, the whole season.
Okay, great. Good job.
Thanks.
Dennis?
So I make a motion that resolution 2016-06-035 authorizing acceptance of the grant for the market at the square from First Federal Savings Bank concerning sprouts at the market be sent to committee with approval, from committee to the city council with approval.
Okay. Made by Dennis, seconded by Charlie. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Second is resolution 2016-06-036R.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That'd be sent to, this concerns the SNAP double value program at the market, and I recommend that we send that to city council with approval.
Second.
Okay. Made by Dennis, seconded by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Next up is resolution number 2016-06-037R, which is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promotional and marketing agreement for the 2016 Champaign-Urbana Folk and Roots Festival. Scott Dossett will present.
Just a quick note, you know, I don't come to these things very often, and I know it's late, I won't take long with this, but I really appreciate the work that everybody in this room puts in. The level of discourse that we have in our council chambers really makes me proud to be here, so. And that doesn't mean you necessarily have to agree with everything else I'm going to say right now. But I am here for the Folk and Roots Festival in downtown Urbana, and we're coming to you for support again this year as we go into our eighth year. I've got about 10 or 12 PowerPoint slides. I want to remind you that we're an all-volunteer effort. 80 performances, two and a half days in schools. Many of those are things that families- Many of those are things that families in town and in the local region all benefit from. Some of these faces are familiar. These are people that show up every year. Our core is still, you know, six to eight people. In February, we get together and say, you know, can we do this again? And they sure thankfully it was a yes. I'll just remind you that we're all Urbana. The pens are major venues that we've used in past events, and we will use this year. Of course, KCPA should be a little bit over toward the west, but I wanted to give you a sense of the detail at downtown. And so, you know, from the very beginning, the festival has actually been assisted by the City of Urbana, and we remain to be very devoted to holding this event in downtown with, hopefully, an eclectic and representative mix of the musical styles and demographics that make up the beautiful country that we live in. We're accessible. About half of the events that we have are free. That's part of what you help us do. 16 people at, 1,600 people at shows and workshops and dances. 30 workshops where people participate in the craft. It's important to us that this be not just a one-way thing, but that people learn what we, what we want to do. And about 1,000 volunteer hours just to run that event in downtown, with 50% of the musicians and storytellers being local people, so that we can stimulate what I think is really an impressive array of talent that we have. And just a reminder that children under 12 are always welcome and are free. And I, I think something that we really value is to try to prevent, present genres, groups that try to break down barriers between audiences and performers and, and maybe even between kind of the subculture units and even, that even a town like Urbana has. You know, most of us are sort of the dedicated or over-dedicated sort of community types that really hope that we can blend all of the lovely people that we have here. And we're working hard on this festival. We've been meeting since February, searching for optimal venues in downtown, and, you know, the situation with the landmark, you know, has really got us in a hole again. And I haven't been successful at communicating with the current owner, so I'm real interested in trying to find out more about what we, we might, what might happen to that facility. The, the great hall there is irreplaceable. There, it does not exist anywhere else, certainly not in Urbana. And we're thankful for your help, most, most certainly. Most of us are natural scientists, are musicians, are community activists, and we're not marketing, advertising people. And I wish we could get someone who is interested in doing that more interested in the festival, but we really rely upon the generosity of this body and other good partners in the community, businesses and private, to make this all work. And so, without taking too much time, because it's close to nine, I'll just kind of roll through these pictures. And then with one that I think, this is all from last year, that really speaks to that integrative component with Noah I Brown's group that did a really nice gospel gig for us, a mandolin orchestra, Morris dancers, and of course, sort of a contemporary bluegrass group that performed at the Rose Bowl. I think it speaks a lot to our kind of commitment to eclectic inclusivity, so I really like this one, so. Thank you for your time, and I hope you support this resolution.
Any questions?
I had a technical one. The attachment, the memo says that you're seeking a matching grant from the city, and it seems like we're just doing a direct sponsorship. Is there?
The, the matching grant is to incentivize us to get out and pound the pavement and match that money that the city contributes.
So this, this $5,000 you're asking for is a, essentially a matching grant?
It, it will only get paid out when we show donations by businesses and individuals to that amount, and then when we spend money for the festival that can be billed against that $5,000.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Is there a motion? Dennis?
Yeah. Certainly, I support this very strongly because it's, it's really like a, a festival that, that has grown and evolves right in the very heart of our own community, and it involves venues that are throughout the downtown and near downtown area, exactly what we want to see in promotion for the arts in that community. And so I'd like to move resolution 2016 oh six oh three seven R, approving promotional and marketing agreement for the 2016 Champaign-Urbana Folk and Roots Festival in downtown Urbana to the city council with approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Next up are resolutions approving a subrecipient agreement between the Urbana Home Consortium and Highland Green, and another resolution with an agreement between the City of Urbana and Highland Green. Matt Rajak?
Good evening. So the Highland Green development, for those of you who may not be as familiar, is a 33-unit affordable rental development that's proposed to be located at 401, 403 East Kerr Avenue. It's been a city and council priority for many years. As a recent development, we were contacted last week and early this week by the developer's attorneys, who had pointed out that there were a few other legal documents in addition to the ones that were provided in the packet, that they would like to see and look over and for us to provide to them. And with that in mind, and our desire to make sure that all parties are able to review these documents and for us to put them together, we would like to recommend continuation of both resolutions, the home and CDBG resolutions, to the next committee meeting on June 27th. If you have any questions, I know we're going to be working with the, the legal division pretty closely on this, but yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Is there a motion for continuance? Or, uh, questions?
A question, real quick question here. Matt, there's a total amount in your second paragraph of the memo. That's all sort of dedicated CDBG money. Is there anything more? Okay, so the city and the consortium are contributing 500,000 federal funding. Is there anything else from the city, or is that just federal money that we're using?
That's just federal money, yeah.
Okay, so we have no other obligation from the city to get, make this happen, or?
I'm not aware of any city obligation outside of the federal obligation from the grants management division.
And, and, but we acquired the property, the land itself is our major contribution, right? It's been so long.
Yes, and, and that will be one of the documents will come back. We do have a, a very pressing timeline on this, to expend the funds by sometime in July, so we do want to bring this to the next committee along with the real estate. But, but that's correct, the, that would include some nominal amount, so that's a big contribution. It turns out that part of this project would actually be eligible for some enterprise zone benefits as well, not the entire project. So that was, um, it is, the layout is low-density enough that it actually qualifies as single and two-family under the terms of the enterprise zone, so that might be seen as another contribution to the project.
So, and, and all the missing stuff can't be done for council next week? You don't expect it to?
No, we don't expect to at this time.
Then, then I move to keep it in committee then, and we'll see it in two weeks, right?
Yeah, the, we were hoping to bring it to the 27th and then the 5th.
That's right.
27th is the next committee meeting, yeah.
Right, right. And then, you know, if there was a scheduled change, that might impact that, but that, that would be our goal at this point.
Well, that's what I'm worried about, is that, that we might be meeting on.
Mayor?
What we could do is have a special committee meeting before the council meeting and a special council meeting. I mean, council meeting before the committee meeting.
Yeah.
You know what? We could just, if you want to get this stuff done tonight that's listed, we could do that and then fill in the other ones as we can. Does that help you or not?
I think we, we'll need to package it with the real estate transfer, and it's possible that if July 5th is a council meeting, would it be possible to bring these forward to a council meeting if the 27th is not possible, if you follow me?
You mean if you can't get it done by the 27th of June? Is that what you're talking about?
So we'll have a meeting on the 27th?
Right.
Yeah.
We're talking about not having a meeting in July on the 25th.
Okay.
But July 5th will be a meeting?
I don't know if we're going to have a July 5th meeting or not, but if you can, you think you can get your part of it done so that we can put it on the agenda? Because I think we'll have a meeting on the 27th of June.
Okay. Yeah. We'll, we'll do our best.
Mayor? If I could suggest, we could look at any materials you have ready next week and have a special council meeting the 27th in two weeks to actually approve it, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that, that might, that might do the trick, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to-
I have a motion to get this done as quickly as possible with whatever sequence of events you need to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll second that one.
Combination of committee meetings and council meetings in the next three weeks ought to do it. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, last up is resolution number 2016 dash zero six dash zero four zero R, resolution amending Urbana Home Consortium Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program Agreement with Community Elements.
So this resolution refers to TBRA agreement that the city signed with Community Elements in June of 2013. It was originally, the, the, the $32,000 amount is a typo, is originally $55,000, and it's, the expiration date is June 30th of this year, and there still remains about $13,000 on the agreement. And it's, the reason for that is just that Community Elements has come into some unanticipated delays in their spending, especially very recently. So we would just, the home regulations allow us to push the expiration date up to four years. There's a, a four-year expenditure on a deadline for home dollars, and with that in mind, we'd like to amend this agreement by just pushing that back to June 30th, 2017. And again, this is entirely federal funds, and we, we do anticipate that they would be able to spend that entire amount within the next year. We just want to be sure that they're able to spend that and not just have it expire and essentially go away. It would be decommitted and would likely end up heading back to HUD. So we would recommend just amending this agreement and recommending approval to city council.
Is there a motion to send this resolution to council with recommendation for approval?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Who, who was that?
Bill did it first.
Bill moved and Charlie second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. There's no further business before the committee. We stand adjourned.